A few things to cover and an hour to do it. So, thank you everybody for joining us and welcome to the Governor's Committee. Let me pull up my agenda, there we go. So, a couple of things we're going to talk about tonight. School reopening, any sort of issues around intergovernmental collaboration where this committee or the school generally might be helpful in terms of moving that forward? And then continue the conversation that we started briefly at the board meeting on Tuesday about the school-based election system and sort of go through next steps. It'll be some of the same information, but really just sort of talking about fleshing out those next steps a little bit more and what that's going to look like and the timeline. We'll also get a legislative update. Courtney, I don't know if there's a whole lot to share, but just here, a little bit there might be. And let's go ahead and dive in, starting with the opening and acknowledgement of the minutes. They came around later, were posted later, and I actually haven't even had a chance to look at them, so if it's okay with everyone, we'll do those meeting minutes and this one at the next intergovernmental committee meeting. So, take a look at those between now and then. We'll email if you have any questions. Public comment. Kara, has anyone signed up for public comments?
Yeah.
Do we, I'm just, more of a logistical thing, do people have to be signed up in order for us to allow them public comments? Do you send them like a separate link or anything? Or if people who are watching wanted to do public comment, can they raise their hand?
Well, most of the watching are watching via the YouTube unless they've signed up and I send them the link to this.
Okay, that's, I thought logistical.
Yeah, it could be, you know, a few minutes before the meeting, they let me know and I can give them the link, but without the link, they...
Okay, great. We won't have a lot of time at the end of the meeting, but if anybody watching does have public comment, you can email Kara Bradshaw and we can get you set up for that. And Kara, is your email, you can say it, is there a easy place for people to find it?
The easiest one is publiccomment@ppsdotnet. I'll watch for that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, let's dive in then on the first issue. So, school reopening, intergovernmental collaboration. So, we got a good update on Tuesday from the superintendent and staff, and we had some advisors from OHSU and other public count in the Monmouth County, sort of talking about where we are from a COVID perspective and a little bit of where we are from a reopening perspective. What I was hoping this committee could talk a little bit about and focus on is, is there any role that either this committee or the board could play at this point in terms of helping with that reopening? So, thinking about requests we might have of either the state or the county, or other governments for that matter, that might need a little bit of oomph to help move those things forward. So, with that, Courtney, or maybe Sharon, I will turn it over to one of you.
Yeah, so I think this is a good conversation to be having. I think we have a few updates. I know, I think you guys got a pretty detailed, or I know you got a pretty detailed Liffey discussion on Tuesday. Gosh, it feels like that was so long ago, doesn't it? So, we won't spend a lot of time on that, but I think we can share some of the updates we've heard on vaccines. Sharon, I don't know, do you want to talk about that or do you want me to?
I think you are as up to date as I am, so I'm happy to fill in for Courtney. Do you want to read that?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, I think, you know, one of the big elements in the room right now is vaccines. How quickly are they going to be coming to Oregon and/or getting distributed once they're here? And how are we going to get our education workforce vaccinated in short order so that we can start thinking about the what's next? And so, right now, you guys probably heard earlier this week that the governor added 65 and over to the Phase 1D list with a nod to January 23rd as the date for that to start rolling out. It sounds like from what I have heard from OHA and others, there's about 200,000 doses in the stockpile coming our way. Now, when that arrives, your guess is as good as mine, but I know that everyone is trying to get that out the door into the state as quickly as possible. So, that's really good news. There's a lot more supply coming our way. The question is, how do we get those shots in people's arms? So, there's been a lot of conversations. Monmouth County is doing what they're calling mass making right now, where they're connecting people who want it to be the right provider. They are not actually hosting clinics, at least at this stage, from what I've been told and from what we've all heard. The providers, the big hospital providers, the systems, they are the ones who are doing the vaccinating. And so, they've been, and some of you maybe if you're in Kaiser received an email, for example, I got an email yesterday saying, hey, if you're interested in the vaccine, sign up here. Of course, if you go to it, it's overwhelmed because the system's probably got a lot of interest. Because everyone, you know, that feels safe doing so is looking to get vaccinated. So, and that's another whole question, right? We want to make sure that we address vaccine hesitancy. There's a lot of people that aren't comfortable and that are not ready to run out to the nearest vaccine clinic once they're available to do it. So, we need to figure out, how do we communicate that with our team and be culturally responsive to that concern and that hesitancy? So, that would be one piece. The conversation with school districts right now is internally, we have a vaccine team that's a meeting regularly to figure out, you know, do we prioritize, how do we prioritize our employee group? How do we like roll this out? David's been involved, Sharon's been involved. How do we communicate to our staff when it's coming? We sent a communication yesterday, just letting people know that we know you want to know more, we will share more when we know more. And so, just letting our staff, making them aware that we have them in mind, we want to make sure they have the information, but there's not a lot to share yet. What else can I tell you? Yeah.
This is Julia. Yeah, so it's interesting because a number of individuals in my family either work at Salem Health or have already entered 1A group and did the whole go to Salem to get the, they've got a huge setup down there where they've got...
Yeah, the air ground.
Yeah, where they've got a major pod. And I'm a little bit concerned that Monmouth County is relying on just external partners like that and that our workforce wouldn't be directed into a specific pod because we just leave it to people to set up their own appointments. It's not going to be a very efficient process. Is that MESD or...
Yeah, so you're right. It's the mega pod.
Is that going to be doing that for large...
Sharon and I were talking about it earlier, the megapod is the ideal scenario for our employee group. We want to make sure that we can, it takes logistical challenges away from the district as well as a bonus, but you're right, the Salem Health has been a popular model. My own mother was vaccinated there last week. It was, it's pretty easy. So, I think that's, that coming down and people seeing how successful it was, and I'm sure there are pitfalls because everything big like that, you know, there are challenges. But I think there's a lot of folks looking to model that. I know that I heard from Kaiser yesterday that they have a mass, they're trying to do a mass vaccination next Wednesday, the 21st. I think that's, yeah, that's the 21st. No, that's Thursday, the 21st, and at the convention center. So, that is something that they're working on. So, I think it's going, that kind of thinking is coming. There's also supposedly, oh, sorry, I meant to tell you, they're standing up a pilot in Solotin this weekend, Kaiser is, and then on the 21st, they're doing a larger one and smaller one. So, that model is coming and the big systems are seeing that it's a good way to get a lot, catch a lot of people. And then of course, we need to make sure that we have the supply. And it sounds like, at least in the near term, we're going to see a lot of doses coming our way, but you know, then there's the follow-up, right? We need the second dose. So, that's, I think, the question that's outstanding is, how many of these large megapods? Sharon loves that term, I know. How many of these megapods are going to get stood up? And if we're doing these big ones, how many, can we rely on the supplies getting to us in order to, you know, get a lot of people vaccinated in short order?
I think I would just add really quickly that there is, we have done contact and we have outreach that's got here in place and that writer firm is helping us with this. And so, we think there's going to be a lot of opportunity in very short order. And it is our strong preference. And yes, Courtney, I do love the megapod technology.
And I think we've also already been communicating with MESD about the numbers. What, you know, how many staff do we have? What types of staff we have? And we're also in close communication, talking about our partners because they are also serving our students and we want to make sure that they are included. And whatever we're talking about educators, we're talking also about our partners.
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned that, like, for example, for our staff, if you're not a Kaiser, you know, that's not your provider, then you wouldn't have it. So, you have this diffuse system where it's dependent upon, you know, setting up an appointment or going in or people going different places versus having a set partnership. And conversations that I've had just in my professional life with, for vaccinating about 25,000 people or plus people, is that the recommendation from the state and the county is to get one provider and set up, and set up a pod because the provider is the one that's going to be, that's who's going to get the vaccine directly from the federal government and be in charge of the storage, the registering and all the pieces of the requirements. So, I guess, I'm just curious, so PPS isn't like picking a partner that would vaccinate all of our staff that, you know, according to the prioritization in one place? But that's, which is a diffuse system where kind of everybody's on their own with their own health care provider.
It sounds like the providers are collaborating quite a bit. I know that they're, I know that Kaiser is vaccinating people that are not Kaiser members or have already in the 1A group. So, yeah, I see the concern and it's very much, from what we're hearing so far, they're all working closely together and collaborating as big systems together to get this done. So, I don't know. I mean, I think we'll, we're going to continue to have those conversations and hope that they can accomplish that.
Is there some kind of certification system? Make out the vaccine?
Well, the vaccine, the provider actually has to sort of register and account for each vaccine. And so, and given that it's a double dose, you get a card that records it and the certified healthcare professional, the entity, they keep track of it. And so, then when you get your second dose, then you've got your documentation that you can add both doses. But it's coming straight from the federal government. OHA is just like a conduit, but it's going straight to the healthcare providers. It's that whoever's going to be administering the vaccine.
So, it just sounds like PPS as an organization really has no zero control over how this all comes down.
So, I'll chime in here, Director Bailey. Did you finish making your point around the role that PPS should take? So, I can assure you...
I don't have a should, I'm saying, it sounds like the way it's rolled out right now is that we, we have no role, or any school district in the state. Vaccine comes down through the healthcare providers, they figure out a way to distribute it, but we're not a partner in that, yes, but maybe not.
Well, PPS would partner with the entity that gets the vaccine.
Right.
That's how, that's how private businesses and others' large organizations will be doing it.
I think you're correct, Director Brim Edwards, you know, as far as an efficient model for an imagined vaccination plan at scale like that. So, and I can appreciate that Courtney and Sharon are being very measured in the information that we're sharing today, but I can assure you, we're actively working or partnering with the major health providers in the region around an eventual plan that mimics, not unlike what you see in some larger urban areas, given the scale of employees and staff that we would need to get through, that we know is a key factor in our reopening and possibilities for bringing more and more groups of students back. So, it would be a little bit premature to start to describe some of the thinking there with other leaders we are partnering with today, but we're, we think some good news is imminent and we want to, we want to get those details down before we share those more broadly. And I didn't, I didn't say good evening to our student leaders and directors.
Good evening, Superintendent, thanks for being here. Yeah, that's great. And really, the purpose that I had sort of putting this on was this question of, is there, is there any role that either this committee or board members can play? That was a little more relevant prior to the governor's announcement, right? Because I think what I was sort of originally thinking was, you know, going to storm the gates of like, you've got to get our teachers, you know, vaccinated soon. In fact, now with the announcement that they can start getting that vaccine, but I think now it becomes a question of, you know, beyond the logistics, is there, is there anything else there either with the state or the county? It sounds at this point like the answer is no, that you're working with the healthcare providers and working with the county, and it sounds like everyone seems to be on the same page, the teachers are our priority.
Yeah, I mean, we'll continue thinking about a role that perhaps the school board could play here. If I felt like there weren't open lines of communication directly with the governor's office or the county chair's office or our health partners, I could tell you, those are live and in real time right now. And so, feeling probably more optimistic today than maybe I have in the last 10 months in this regard, so, which is good. But I guess I would leave it to senior staff here, you know, to explore if there would be a role where we think the school board could be helpful in any barriers we might be experiencing, but it doesn't seem to be the case right now. There's a good, there's a good two-way flow happening right now on some important elements that you've been hoping for in the coming days and weeks.
Great. Well, let's pivot, staying on the subject of reopening and pivot to the, figure the subject of testing. This has been something that I think has, you know, come up repeatedly locally and nationally about the importance of testing to a safe reopening plan. And I don't, we didn't hear a whole bunch about this on Tuesday, and I'm not sure actually, unlike vaccines, I'm not sure that everyone's on the same page at different levels of government around either the importance of this or sort of who's responsible for it. But if, I will just tell you, my own personal belief is this is where the state and the governor should be stepping forward in a leadership role and really saying, look, this type of testing has been shown to be very important, this rapid testing. We know school districts can't afford, not only afford to do it, but also logistically, right? I mean, having every school district set this up. And so, as a state, we're going to step in and sort of make sure that every school district has all the testing to move forward. Has that happened?
Yeah. I can speak to that a bit just based on information from the governor's office earlier this week. There is, in the metrics that are being released on the 19th, there will be mention of testing. They are aware and agree that it is a good tool in our toolbox. It's not the only tool. We know that vaccines not the only tool as well. You've got to keep wearing masks, we've got to have a testing strategy, we've got to vaccinate people. So, there will be details about testing. They didn't highlight a lot of specifics, you know, surprise, right? They're being careful. But it sounds like they're going to want to, I don't want to use the word required because I haven't seen it in writing, but I believe they're going to have some kind of requirement to have onsite to access to testing if you're in person or hybrid. That is what I heard quote say earlier this week, Director Gill. So, that's what we know. I think you're right. They're seeing that too. This is something that we need to do if we're going to really reopen. And whether it's, I think it's going to be, what I, the notes I took was that it was around symptomatic students or anyone who was exposed, students or staff that would have any kind of known exposure. So, whether it's going to be a random testing or, you know, an everyone test every week, I don't know that level of detail at this point, but we'll get more information on the 19th when we see the new metrics and the, or the new, the new metrics and the new guidance from ODE.
Superintendent...
Go ahead, Amy.
Sorry, Scott. This is Amy. Superintendent, have you heard anything in your conversations with your peers around the country about the likelihood of the feds specifically earmarking some of these stimulus funds for a cache of tests for K-12? It's something that has been talked about and advocated for, but I don't, I don't know the likelihood of that coming down the pike, do you?
Can I speak to that too? Sorry.
Sure.
Same phone call or meeting earlier this week. They are going to be tests that come from the feds, the rapid tests, and I believe it's CAREZAC dollars that'll be used to cover those. So, that's kind of all I know, but I think that's good news.
Courtney, I have one question surrounding testing. It sounds like it is either the state, whether it be the governor's office or the Oregon Health Authority that would be the body coming up with the plan for testing and then I guess implementation in partnership with us is how that would work, my understanding.
Yeah, yep, you're right, Parker. It's all about partnership right now. I think we're all seeing that. And so, ODE is in close communication with OHA because they're not the health experts and they know that they're not. So, OHA is giving a lot of guidance and support to ODE as they develop their Ready School Safe Learners revisions that are coming next week. So, you're right, it's a lot of state agencies working together right now. It's the perfect example of how intergovernmental, the perfect example for this committee.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Another question is, will there be any kind of temperature scanning available?
I don't know, I don't know what that will look like, Director Bailey, in the Ready School Safe Learners. I know it's, there's, that's a big document and there's a lot of mention of that, I think, in the current version, so I'm assuming that a lot of that will remain, but I don't know.
I mean, we know it's common practice anyway for sick kids to come to school. But with COVID, I mean, this becomes a real issue and...
Yeah, the, you're right, and the health and safety part of the Ready School Safe Learners guidance is, I believe, not going to change much. So, I think those kinds of protocols are still going to be in effect and in place because you're right, it's like testing is one, just one thing, and we also need to be continuing these other practices.
I can happen that in my conversation with the head of HR in Lake West Wego, and they have been doing temperature screening in Liffey, and the plan is to not, at the time I spoke with her anyway, but the plan was to not continue with that in a hybrid model because of the amount of time it would take for students to enter the building for the vaccine to take place. So, pushing that expectation about self-training, you know, at home and through the visual signs and not taking a temperature test. I would also offer, you know, with regard to the COVID testing, one of the gaps in our knowledge about transmission is that pediatric incidence of COVID often does not manifest, it's often symptomatic. I think it's a miss to only test symptomatic students and staff. I think random testing isn't actually the main important element when we talk about our Swiss cheese model. The quality of the layer of Swiss cheese around testing makes a big difference if you're doing some random testing in addition, or even tools for testing in addition to symptomatic testing. That's particularly true in our PPS, right, our students.
I think it would be safe to say, Director Bailey, to your point, we don't know everything yet. We're going to get a lot of information dumped on us next week.
Appreciate what you, what you shared.
Do we have any info about contact tracing? Is there going to be any enhanced capabilities around that? Is the district going to be responsible for that? Is the county? Do we know?
I have not, Director Moore, I have not heard any, anything specific about school districts taking on that role.
This is a little informal. My understanding is that most counties have stopped contact tracing because... Just about every conversation boils down to an issue of capacity to do it and whether it's so far gone that it's just, it's difficult to do. It's certainly, I believe, a flexibility that exists in the SR2 resources if we get to a level to where we could manage it at the school level and having, and having folks do that. But that's sort of after vaccine and testing, sort of the third sort of component we would see about trying to accomplish. Sharon?
Yeah, I can share that as schools have not been open, that PPS and MESD have been in a cooperative arrangement. We gather as much information as we can and then we turn it over to MESD. So, some of that is the beginnings of contact tracing, so we're not responsible for, but we are trying to help with that. We have significant concerns about staff continuing when that becomes, once schools open, about what we can do there. And you are accurate to say that our county contact tracing is a, is a fraction of what they would like to be doing because it's outpaced capacity.
So, I think in the absence of contact tracing, it just underscores the need to have random testing. Can I ask another question? And this is, this is pretty deep in weeds, but I'll ask it anyway. Is anybody at any level talking about doing testing of wastewater as a method to identify outbreaks?
We have not talked about that at Portland Public Schools. I happen to have a close family member and household member who does have excellent testing at his place of service, which includes resident hall, and we are not talking about that on campus.
I'd say OSU is doing that as well. And just, it may be just another tool in terms of just a, just a broad sort of measurement of whether you have anything in it and maybe way easier than random testing of individuals and be able to catch more cases of communities' red lips at our schools.
My understanding is that it's not as complicated to set up as it sounds like it might be. And I have a friend at OSU who has sort of offered to put us in touch with the guy who set up the OSU system if we're interested. So, you might want to start thinking about that.
I want to go ahead and pivot to our next topic, but I just wanted to sort of wrap up, just maybe, maybe, maybe ask Superintendent or his staff if there are any other areas where, from an intergovernmental perspective, you all could use assistance? And also areas now and then also thinking about how we do this going forward. I can imagine as we continue to go down this road of vaccines and reopening and testing, there may be hurdles that a little bit of political pressure or help would, rapid would be helpful. So, I want to make sure that we can also turn around pretty quickly if we do a send a letter or make some phone calls or do other things to, again, bring some pressure appropriately where it needs to be.
And if something comes to mind specifically, Courtney, please chime in, given her role. What I, I do appreciate the board's willingness to be proactive in that fashion. But I also want to look at this from sort of the assets-based point of view is, there's going to be a whole lot of communication, plan and PR campaign that certainly will need to be part of our impending decisions to be announced. And so, you know, already we're starting to hear from notables in Portland around their willingness to help the school system promote not just an eventual return to school, but continuing to practice safe and healthy practices and just sort of help Portland Public Schools get the word out. So, certainly our directors will need to play an important role in doing that as well with our constituents.
Yeah, I don't have anything specific in mind yet, but thank you for offering and absolutely take you up on it. absolutely take you up on it, when and if the need arises.
Great, okay.
I'm sorry, can I ask one last question before you move? Is the state or anybody else offering advice or assistance around ventilation issues?
I don't want to speak for the risk management or anyone who's not joining us tonight, but I know that, you know, there's a lot of conversation around facilities right now, coming out of our partners, partners like OEA, they're talking a lot about that in their messaging. So I think this, that issue is going to continue to get some, you know, make some headway, or they're going to continue talking about the need for it overall. Not even, because this was an issue before, right? This has just exacerbated the need for it, just like it's exacerbated a lot of things. So I think that it's not, it's easy to tell whether, whether there's going to be, you know, funding available for it, but the, some of the things that are ongoing or perennial funding streams for things like ventilation and new facilities, like the Ocum program at the state, are going to be continuing to get some traction and talk in failing. But whether it will be a bigger bucket to address those needs, I'm not sure.
But just to follow up on that, have, do we have an assessment of the air quality and ventilation currently in our schools if we're anticipating that students are, we're going to reopen schools at some point?
Yeah, it's bad.
Well, I guess, I mean, seriously, it's a serious question, that if we're going to plan on reopening schools and having students and staff in schools, do we have an assessment of the status of the ventilation system and the air quality and the airflow in all of our schools?
The answer is yes and no. We have an assessment of our ventilation system, and we also engage the industrial hygienist to help identify the appropriate approach and maximization of our existing system. And there has also been a recognition that there are some classrooms that didn't have appropriate ventilation and some purchases of air purifiers for them. Those have not, there hasn't been really a lot of technical assessments from the government in that, but that's the yes, and there is a standard operating protocol. And our facilities team is working on an FAQ with regard to that as well. That's the yes. The no is there, isn't testing of air quality in individual classrooms or locations? So I'm not sure exactly what you might mean by that, but there isn't individual, there isn't air quality testing. There is ventilation and HVAC system maximization.
I know I'm just helping you feel like you're. You said you like having somebody else.
Thank you for the clarification, that's actually, the latter was what I was referencing, so, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on, thank you for that discussion. So next up, we have the, a conversation, sort of continuation of the conversation on school board electrosystem changes and potential steps. And we started this conversation at our Tuesday board meeting, although it was very late, so apologies to those who are interested who may have fallen asleep by the time we got to it. I'm going to go back through pretty quickly today, some of this, and just for a little bit of background, and then what I'm hoping to do, and again, it's already pretty late in the meeting, but what I'd love to do is get feedback from board members about any sort of issues that they think they, they might want to put on the table for this conversation or any other issues that need to come up, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps, where we sort of. So again, just as a recap, currently, school board elections in PPS require candidates to live in a particular zone, but candidates then run and are elected at large, which means throughout the entire district. And there is, you know, there is some evidence from other places that that can disenfranchise voters and candidates of color. As we talked a little bit about on Tuesday, that that makes sense in the sense that you can have very strong support in your school or your cluster, but maybe not be as well-known, you know, district-wide, and have a hard time sort of, sort of running a district-wide campaign. Smaller voting areas, the theory behind this is that they level the playing field because candidates have to reach a smaller number of voters, which is less expensive and therefore make all very attractive for getting folks in to the system and to run and more candidates. And then hopefully board members will better reflect the children's feelings that PPS assumes. That's that. So the question becomes, how can we increase access to more candidates for the PPS board? This is something that, as I mentioned, we've had lots of conversations individually about, and I think there's, there's a general consensus on the board that this is the direction we'd like to move in. So, you know, we can reform our process by limiting voting to the fine zone of the district. It is, it was interesting to me to find out that school districts in general set their own boundaries and rules around elections. That is a little bit different than cities and counties, which often have charters that voters have to weigh in. That is not because of school districts, so school boards can make this change. And then simultaneously, to sort of the conversation we're having here, in 2018, the state legislature also enacted a new law, HB 3010, that prohibits districts from conducting elections that will impair members of a protected class from having equal opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. It also set up an affirmative way for people to challenge districts that they believe have elections that do impair members of a protected class. And remember, members of protected classes, everybody, those are people, race, religion, age, et cetera. So it, in its, in addition, sets up a, a method by which districts can correct or sort of, sort of, sort of review their systems and then make potential changes for that as well. And then, at the same time that we were having this conversation and the state legislature comes along and passes this bill, we also have the 2020 census coming away. Every 10 years after census data is there, well, PPS is required to redraw our boundaries to make sure that as people move within that decade, that our boundaries stay, move with them, so that each zone is roughly equal in terms of overall representation. We're expecting 2020 census data in the second half of 2021. I'm getting more and more optimistic about that number, the less and less time the Trump administration has to mess around with that data. And so hopefully, this will be, end up being a relatively straightforward census, the data will come on time, we can do our process as well. But it does make sense to think about all these things for this to be successful. So in terms of next steps, what we want to do is develop a project plan that would include both a project team that have staff, board members, and a robust community engagement plan. And that project plan, it is going to, it is going to definitely take some time, you know, to, to think about all the different aspects of this. We're going to need to consult with experts of data analysis and potential electrosystem structures. There are people who think about this all the time, and what makes a fair and just electoral system, and we should find some of those experts that are in the process. And then I think we will probably also need to contact some of the data analysis, what's going to be included in this. We need to work with Monoma County and Washington County and Clackamas County elections, even when very small numbers of voters in those other two counties, they would also have to make changes, if we decide to make changes, but primarily Monoma County. And in terms of guidance and timing, it does take them some time to both make the zone changes, but particularly if we, if we make a change in terms of how we do elections. And then, you know, hopefully, optimistically, we can bring forth options and recommendations to the board by the end of the calendar year. That's not, we can set this deadline internally. The deadlines we are operating against will be mostly driven by Monoma County elections. Since we are not, there is not time to make any change for this upcoming election in March of 2021, that gives us a little bit more time to sort of think through this. We don't know for sure. I think, though, we've got plenty of time for the 2023 election to get things to Monoma County, but we do want to move relatively quickly. One thing I added on Tuesday that wasn't on these slides, we just remind people, if we use the process that's outlined in the state law under HB 3010, the changes would not go into effect until the 2025 election. However, we have the option of not using that process and potentially making the change available for the 2023 election. That doesn't provide us quite the same level of safe harbor from any challenges, but if we're following that process, and I think our intent is to not only follow that process, but actually to achieve the outcomes that that legislation looked at, it would be in relatively good condition as a result of that. So with all that said, I kind of want to open it up a little bit for other issues, other thoughts, questions. I'm coming out of this meeting, I'm going to work with staff on developing this project plan and timeline. We'll be bringing that back both to this committee but also to the full board. Another thing I said on Tuesday is this really has to be a full board conversation all the way through. So I think this committee can help do some of the legwork and to move things along, but we really need to make sure we're doing regular work sessions and we'll build those into a timeline as well. And then we want to be super transparent with the public. This is one of those issues that I think, again, we're headed in a very positive direction. I'm actually really excited about this work, but we want to make sure everyone understands what we're doing, why we're doing it, the timeline. So again, we're not, anybody who is interested either in just monitoring the process or interested in actually jumping in knows well in advance what those changes are and how they might change future campaigns. So with that, let me just open it up to thoughts and comments.
So I think it's important to note the positives, positives of making a move like that, and at the same time to note some potential pitfalls. And one of those, the one that comes to mind, is that if I'm elected from a zone by a zone, then I'm going to look out for the schools in my zone. And if, and besides that, it would open up the possibility for, say, there's seven of us each from different zones, some coalitions that tend to favor four zones or five zones over two or three zones. So there is, there's less, you know, right now, I feel I represent every student in this district, every school in this district. So I can imagine, for example, when we were starting the bond process in 2012, that there could have been, I'm not saying there would have been, but could have been more of a, hey, how can I get my high school in the first bond? Kind of coalition work behind the scenes. You know, I'll support Lincoln if you support Cleveland, kind of a thing, as opposed to a, using some objective criteria. So I think that needs to be noted as, as well. And I don't know if we have examples from other districts and some real on-the-ground intelligence of how that works out. I do know if, y'all remember AJ, we worked with briefly as a consultant? He was like, well, if you guys are considering this, I will come and testify against doing it. And I think for those kind of reasons. And I think that comes from his on-the-ground experience in a couple of areas. So I think that needs to be part of the discussion as we go forward.
So I actually contacted AJ to kind of re, you know, re-up that conversation with him. And I asked him if he is aware of any studies around, you know, different, different ways to organize school board elections and what kind of impact it might have on, you know, equitable outcomes and that sort of thing. I'll pass along anything I hear that's on.
That would be great, thanks Rita for doing that. Yeah, Scott, to your point, I think it is an issue we definitely have to, to take up. You know, we, we talk about, I mean, the simplest change, let's just simply say, you've got seven, seven members that, you know, gets elected in your zone, but there are other changes that could be made, you know, that sort of just, just one more step in complexity. You could have five zones and two, two at-large school board members. My understanding is there are districts that do that, or similar things than that. I believe, and Liz is not here today, I believe there are restrictions on the total number of school board members we can have in state law. I'm looking to see if anybody knows that. I don't, I feel like maybe she.
It's five or seven, I think, five or seven, and I, I think it's based on the size of the district.
Okay, well, I hope it's not five, because we're in violation.
No, I think if you're a smaller district, you know, there's, there's a lot of districts that fewer than 2,000 students.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. I, I thought it was, I thought we were limited to seven, but I didn't want to say that without someone else actually confirming. And so, so I think that, but, but I think, Scott, your, your point's a really good one. I do want to also note, and I, and I say this, I know, I know this is not what you meant at all, in some other work I've done around this, historically, that argument that if you get elected at large, you will be able to speak on behalf of the entire district or city or county, has actually been used to mask the racist underpinnings of at-large elections. And so again, I, I know that that was not, you know, the reason why you're saying it, and I think there is real value in having that conversation, because I think you're right, those motivations.
Thank you.
Need to be, need to be thought of, right? What, what is that overall impact? But, but I also know that that is, that is something, interestingly enough, some, some other work I did for City Club around cities, you know, this form of, of at-large election is banned by the courts in a number of southern states, states that are routinely aggressively violated the rights of minority voters. Courts stepped in decades ago and said, you're not allowed to have this type of system. So there are lots of, of issues, and I think we need to really daylight all those things, because I think Scott, your point was a really good point.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, and, and again, to do a citywide, most likely to vote mail or risk on the order of 15,000 to 20,000.
At least.
Yeah, and that's, that's to do one, and, you know, if you have more money, you can do two or three of those, and there you go.
And think also just.
20,000 is a daunting number for most of us.
And apply, apply an equity lens to, to even the way people get elected in general. Who are you going after with the most likely voters? They tend to be more well-off white, you could say, versus an alternative strategy, a small district of like, how could you get more people registered, right? How could you get your people who support you to actually register and then make sure that they vote, a lot more opportunities there? Et cetera, so there's lots, lots of things.
So just, maybe, just a comment scrap on your, sort of, some of the potential downsides. I think the other thing is because of, I mean, it depends on where you live in the city, so I'm somebody who had kids who went to three different middle schools in different zones. So I think there's lots, there's lots of ways in which, if, if you had a, you know, being elected by a zone, that I think, you know, the, the boundaries are of those zones would be, you know, you cross over from, you know, Stark or Burnside and you're in somebody at, you're in a different zone. And I, I think the sort of parochialism would be less than expected. I mean, you know, also like, you have been at a great cross very, very tight, apparently. But I've been all, all over the place, I think that's true for a lot of different people, and I, I do think, I see when you look at an issue, you look at it from a citywide perspective, so I don't, I don't think that necessarily gets lost. So while it's, it's a potential downside, I don't think it's a conclusion necessarily.
Thank you, Nathan. Yeah, and, and I, I think I said potential, I agree with you, and again, it's not like that would override all the other considerations that have been brought up. But if there's a way we can either get some evidence and say, well, actually, it's not a concern in real life, cool, full speed ahead. Or if, if there is difference, again, Andrew, I appreciate you bringing up those, the simple model, and there's other ways we can do this as well, other ways to think about going forward. Again, another option is some kind of district funding for elections. And again, if you have a, a small enough zone, that becomes a pretty minimal every other year expenditure. I'm not saying we want to go there, because I, we all know what our budget is doing these days. But again, so, one more option we should think about going forward.
Actually, as a piece of, just to follow on that Scott's comment, just as a piece of the sort of research, since this is not going to be like, in the next, you know, month this is going to happen, but it would be good to better.
I think you muted yourself, did you? I think you muted yourself, did you?
Andrew muted me. I won't take, I won't take that personally. I was just going to say, it's like, I think that would be another piece of information that would be useful to the committee and by extension, the board, is just to understand what, if anything, PPS could do. Obviously, the city, you know, has a funding mechanism, but, you know, is that even allowed in the state statute? Or like what would, what would it entail to do something like that?
Can I make a suggestion?
Actually, I think Amy, Rita, I think Amy was trying to get in and then Amy and then Rita.
I just want to say, Andrew, thank you so much for really picking this up. Courtney and I have been talking about this for about five years and kind of linking it to the census, but it doesn't have to be. You know, there are a lot of different creative approaches. I'll reach out to our council colleagues on our call this Friday and put this topic on the agenda and see what people have to add. But there was a big, high-profile suit in Ferguson, Missouri, around how they do their school board elections. And the way that that course, that case was settled was ranked choice voting. So that, say there were three seats up, everybody voted for all three of those seats, but you could vote three times for the same person. And it wasn't tied to geography. So that was kind of an interesting bellwether case just a couple of years ago. But I really appreciate this work. I think there's a lot of opportunities for us. Andrew, we have a contact at Portland State who is a national voting rights leader in this field academically, political science professor, Kim Williams. So I'm happy to see if we could somehow engage her on helping us with this. I've reached out to her about this before. So I'm just excited about, about this work. I think, I think there are a lot of good reasons for us to reform the way we, way we do it now.
That's a great resource. Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, I appreciate this conversation and I'm glad that we're going to start actually tackling this. But there are lots of other components that that are barriers to improving representation or representativeness of the school board, including the absence of compensation for school board members. Given the amount of time that it takes, it's extremely difficult for somebody who, you know, has a full-time job with relatively inflexible hours to take the time to make all of these meetings and the rest of it. And I know there's a state statute prohibiting compensation, but it doesn't mean we can't change it. So, I mean, I, I would advocate for, since we're not talking about doing something, you know, next week, we have a little time, I think it would be useful for us to contemplate, you know, kind of a full array of barriers to participation that exist. And we might want to partner with other school districts to explore those questions. Anyway, that's.
Rita, I, I don't disagree with that, and I also would just chime in about election limits, whether we just raise the issue and it would be voluntary or whether there's some way we make it compulsory. But I think contribution limits is really critical here.
Brooke, did you have a comment?
Yes, I had, I had sort of a gaggle of questions, relatively unrelated. I guess my, my first one is, how far along are we in coming up with a, with a proposed change? My, that, that question stemmed from, I was wondering how voting or how districts would be, how you know what district you're in, is it where you live versus where you're enrolled? And I also had a question about the, the, the age component, which I know is a different discussion, but if we are sort of having a discussion about overhauling the. If we are having a discussion about overhauling the elections, that might be a topic to tie in there. I think I had another specific question, but it is.
Let me, let me take those because I'll forget the first ones if you, and then maybe you'll think about them. So it turns out how far along we're not, right? So this is the very beginning of the competition. And, and so I think that is the reason why it's great, it's great, puts a lot of things on the table. I think in terms of your zone, it is where you reside, where you resents is not where you're enrolled. And that does create interesting things to look at, right? As, as, you know, Julie mentioned earlier, you know, you might have, you might live in a zone, but your kids might go to school in a different zone, but, you know, you're voting for this school board member and that school board member. So it is something to sort of look at, but I think it would have to be, in a certain respect, from that. And then absolutely, on voting age, here's, what I said on Tuesday, I'll sort of repeat it because these are great issues we're bringing up. In my mind, and they're all related to people, I view this as a great opportunity to dig into all of these and then begin to sort of stage and say, okay, what does it take to make these changes? And are some of them we want to move forward with right away, others we might want to move forward with, but maybe not right away? I think, you know, trying to get a perfect system of the entire thing, campaign limits, changing voting age, ranked choice voting, it's very, very complicated. And I also want to remind people, we are at a little bit of risk right now, so that's also a reason to move forward. We all want to do it, but we also can be challenged in the state law for our system. To the extent we are challenged, we need to, you know, there's a process we need to go through. You know, that's prescribed in state law. So some of this is also preemptive, which is why we want to move relatively quickly. What I'm hearing from folks, though, are, you know, we should, do we, do we want to look at some at-large seats in combination with zones? Do we want to look at, do some research on public financing, what that would take, research on different voting systems, right? Things that might come with the rare, look at the issue of compensation, look at the issue of campaign limits. And then finally, I'm very interested, so I'll put it on the table, I'm very interested in voting. What would it take to, you know, lower the age for school? Well, from a legal perspective, I think it's a state law change, but that's just a, right? Change whole registration system. And then if we lower the voting age, we'd be also, you know, sixty percent for school. So, but all of those, again, what I'd like to do is work with staff to put together a project plan. A lot of this is sort of research-based, and then I think as we come back with council, we'll probably be able to get some recommendations on that. Let's move forward with this set of things quickly and then let's do a little bit more deliberate approach. All of this will need to be deliberate, it's not a state law. Use our racial awareness, make these changes, make sure that we're nice and.
Yeah, absolutely. And the voting age thing, I guess, is one thing of particular interest of me and, and of the DSC. I'd like to volunteer us as a, as a DSC, I know there's a lot of interest to my colleagues, if there's any sort of areas that we can be of service in moving forward with this process. Voting as a whole topic, but specifically around the, the age, the age part of it.
My fellow board members might not know that I was on the board of the Oregon West Project for decades. So the whole idea of young people voting and engaging that is from the center of my mind, so somebody who wants to support this. Great. With that, any, any final comments? I know we're over tonight. I want to give Courtney just a minute to give us a quick legislative update if there's anything that we need to tackle.
I think the only thing worth noting is that the legislature have gavelled in this week just doing organizational work, electing the speaker, Tina Kotak got elected speaker again, so her at the helm. They go into actual work mode next week, but they have canceled floor session committee for Tuesday. We're saying an abundance of caution about the Capitol building due to all the NSA spending on Senator and country lately. So we'll get, we'll be going on Thursday of next week, but, you know, that's also just a change if there's anything that goes down. So we'll be watching carefully and, you know, there's like 1,800 bills, I haven't sifted through them all. We've done, there's COVID seen all the time and all metrics all the time, so working through those. But I'll be providing updates, probably starting next week, since there's not much to share in an email this week. Last year or last, well, last year too, but last long session, I tried to do a weekly starting update for the board on some of the highlights. There's a lot of action all the time that's, I know that there are specific variables, so I'll, I'll be.
Great. And, you know, one, one small thing, but I did read that article, Governor Representative, Democrat Representative, same president area, was recommending that the state take over the same president's school district as well as the other. Combat issues and controversy. We could just, I don't imagine that has a lot of legs, but we could track that, it's a whole bunch of issues.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to make any of this, we'll track that. And just so you also know, one of the bills that is causing me some real interest is, is to make the onion the state vegetable. Just so you know what kind of stuff we're dealing with down there.
Hey, if you need a lobbyist on that, I, one of my good friends is responsible for making the shit around the state mushrooms. So you can give me pro-vote lobby advice on that.
I'll try to highlight some of those kind of weirdo bills just for levity in my opinion.
Yeah, if you need any help, I, I worked with a lady who helped get the state help.
Look at that, we've got.
I think, I think a team of experts in here, yeah.
Solid team here.
But yeah, nothing else really to report, I'll be here later on.
Great, thanks, Courtney. Any other final thoughts or comments or questions?
And I'll take, and Liz couldn't join tonight to follow the elections conversation, she's taking her son to college. So I said she could be on the bus, but I'll communicate back and push them much later if supported.
Hi, everyone, it's Judy Brennan and in partnership.
All right, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. It's a nice discussion. Great. Dr. Yelson.